I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome, this is a city council meeting for Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. It is July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Kelly, would you do a roll call, please?
English?
Yes, I am.
Wood?
Here.
Gookin?
Aki.
Miller?
Here.
Gabriel?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Tonight, Richard Dance from the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints is doing our invocation. You rise and stay rising for the pledge. Welcome, Richard.
Thank you. Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful to be here this evening in a functioning city council meeting, but we're more especially grateful for the events of the last three months. In May, Idaho legislator passed a resolution honoring the traditional family, and in June, our own city council passed a similar resolution, making the gold standard traditional families with a natural father, mother, children, as a way to flourish in our society. We're especially grateful for the events after June twenty-ninth, the fallen firefighters and the community spirit that was so evident and so blessed by the leaders of this community, starting with Linda Koppas and her message from the Coeur d'Alene Chamber of Commerce to rally us together and the parade. It's hard to speak about the gratitude and reverence in the parade, watching those two horses without riders and the International Association firefighters behind them and feeling the community spirit so evident. We're especially grateful for so many individuals and businesses that stood out, whether it be the Coeur d'Alene Resort, the Coeur d'Alene Press, the Hagadon Media Group, or the International Association of Fighter Fighters, and so many others that win beyond the call of duty, whether it be logistics, or hosting, or refreshments, flowers, attending, and just expressing their appreciation. We're grateful that fallen families' mortgages have been taken care of, that so many other funds have been raised, that their husbands and fathers can no longer provide, and we're grateful for so many nonprofit and charitable groups in our community that are outstanding in the services they provide to all of us. We just ask that we'll be able to have the same community spirit as other hardships face us in the future. In this, we say in gratitude in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Kristi, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amendments to the agenda, council? Any action needed? Next up, public comments. We do have a list there. We ask you to be three minutes. A little fudge time today. Mr. Gookin agreed, so we're gonna give a little fudge time.
Love fudge.
Fudge with ice cream and nuts. We're trying to have some fun up here. All right, first up, Julie Amandor. Welcome, Julie.
Good evening, esteemed council members, mayor. My name's Julie Amador, professor of mathematics education and associate dean of research and faculty development at the University of Idaho here in Coeur d'Alene. I'm here on behalf of the University of Idaho Coeur d'Alene and specifically concerning agenda item H-two. First, I want to express our deepest gratitude for your tireless service to our city and community. Our CEO, Dr. Andy Fields, unfortunately had a prior out-of-state commitment, but he's live streaming this meeting right now and extends a sincere appreciation for your work. As you know, the University of Idaho has been a cornerstone of higher education in our region for decades, with a significant presence at the Harbor Center for over twenty years. Our longstanding partnership with LCSC at the Harbor Center has been invaluable, and their recent vacancy has presented us with considerable budgetary challenges. As a not-for-profit entity dedicated to providing educational opportunities in our region, this proposed sublease is crucial. It will enable us to cover operational costs and continue our vital work, supporting the community through education and research. We are incredibly enthusiastic about the prospect of the Coeur d'Alene Tribe joining us at the Harbor Center. This collaboration holds immense potential for new partnership opportunities focused on education and research. The Tribe's Natural Resources Department is deeply engaged in education, outreach, and community support within their Aboriginal homeland. This new location will significantly enhance these efforts and provide more accessible opportunities for all. We firmly believe this opportunity aligns perfectly with our master lease, which emphasizes education and research. We see this as a mutually beneficial partnership that will strengthen educational offerings and research initiatives in our region. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration of this important matter.
Thank you, Julie. Appreciate that. Next up, Rachel Farmer. Rachel? Welcome.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Rachel Farmer, legally now Ray Fuentes. I am representing North Idaho Pride Alliance this evening, reading a letter on their behalf in support of the HREI lease renewal. To the Coeur d'Alene City Council, we are writing on behalf of the North Idaho Pride Alliance to express our strong support for the Human Rights Education Institute's lease renewal. Since two thousand seventeen, NIPA has maintained a valuable partnership with HREI, utilizing their facility for numerous community events and programs. The Human Rights Education Institute has established itself as a recognized safe space within our community, a resource that is essential for the populations we serve, who often face unique challenges and require welcoming, secure environments. In October two thousand nineteen, NIPA moved into an office space at HREI to help establish a physical presence in the community and provide safe haven for those we serve. While NIPA has since established our own operational office space, we continue to rely on HREI's facilities for community events and house our lending library there. This ongoing partnership demonstrates the vital role HREI plays, not only for our organization, but for multiple community partners who depend on accessible, inclusive spaces. The Human Rights Education Institute serves as more than just a building. It represents a commitment to fostering understanding, education, and safety for all community members. Their continued presence in our city strengthens the fabric of our community and provides essential resources that would be difficult to replace. We respectfully urge the city council to approve the lease renewal for the Human Rights Education Institute. Their work and the space they provide are invaluable assets to Coeur d'Alene. Thank you for your consideration on behalf of the North Idaho Pride Alliance.
Thanks, Rachel. Bill Green? Welcome, Bill.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. Thanks so much for your service and for the opportunity to render a little opinion here. This is in reference to an article in the Coeur d'Alene Press from June twenty-sixth, which I think was a Thursday, regarding the community library and the CIN and the CLN. So in that article, it started out by saying expresses concerns with the CLN, the community library network, regarding policies from minor cardholders. It stated in the paper that minors cannot access materials considered to be harmful to minors regardless of the parent's wishes. So I like to point out several Idaho statutes. One is thirty-two-ten-ten, which is known as the Idaho Parental Rights Act, and it talks about how the interests of parents include the high duty and right to direct their children's destiny, including their upbringing and education. Idaho Code eighteen-fifteen-seventeen-B is the School and Library Protection Act, and subsection two, A, B, and C give very detailed descriptions of materials prohibited when they're harmful to minors. Subsection three, A, B, and C outlines the process by which the institution, library, or school can be held accountable for violation of that statute. Notice that it's the institution that's accountable and not the individual librarian. Subsection C clearly outlines the affirmative defense the institution has when it can be shown that a parent or legal guardian authorized a minor to access materials deemed harmful. Idaho Code fifteen-seventeen-D Delta also clearly states that an employee of a bona fide library or school institution is by that fact protected with an affirmative defense. Idaho Code eighteen-fifteen-fourteen gives a very clear list of definitions of all the terms related to the School and Library Protection Act. Along with all the other terms listed in the statute, it clearly describes the meaning of, quote, "harmful to minors." The CLN minor card policy clearly follows these statutes. The minor card is for kids zero to seventeen. There's a section for kids up to twelve, a section for kids from thirteen to seventeen, and a general section for all. A minor can go anywhere in a library except to the spot where books defined by the protection statute as harmful to minors will be shelved and segregated from the rest of the library in a section that is called the mature content section. Minors cannot go there unless accompanied by a parent or guardian and authorized by parent or guardian. This honors the parents' right to access to any materials he or she deems helpful to their kids. It actually expands parental rights in the sense that a parent now has a right to be free of any concern about what their kids may encounter when wandering around the library. Oh gee, am I over at time?
Go ahead, finish.
So these clearly, and in the form the library has, clearly states all these statutes on the back when requesting relocation. One trustee stated that the CLN is determining what kids can read. "It makes me sick to my stomach," was the quote. Another trustee said in the paper that the CLN policies have gone beyond statutory duties of trustees and quoted the paper as saying, "It's taking away parental rights, and we don't support that." A library staff person said in the paper that he would be upset if he had a child in the library system. "I want to parent my child, I don't want them to parent my child," was the comment. So I just want to point out that the library board, I know, is appointed by you guys, the council, and I just think that some of the things that were said in that article are unfair and inaccurate. And as that committee, which works for you, which works for us, I would hope that the council, maybe Mr. English is their liaison with the library board, can encourage them to be more accurate and more fair and clear about when they're making these comments in public, because what was said in the paper clearly conflicts with what the Idaho statutes say, in my opinion, anyway, defer to Mr. Adams. So I just would hope that you would take that into consideration and consider letting the library board know that it's important for them to be accurate and clear and fair in comments that they make in public about the library system, whether it's CIN or CLN or their own. Sorry about the overtime. Thanks so much for your time and attention.
Thank you, Bill. Next up, Jeanette Lester. Welcome, Jeanette.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor McEvers, council members, staff, and community. Tonight, you have before you a new lease proposal for the Human Rights Education Institute to continue occupying its historic Battery Railway Station in beautiful Coeur d'Alene City Park. We have been its longest-known recent tenant at twenty-two years and are an established beacon of hope for our community, citizens, businesses, and visitors as they enter the hub of our downtown sector. Before I continue, I would like to share a special appreciation to the Parks and Recreation staff that serve our surrounding building. They have been generous and efficient partners, and we are grateful for their support to help us maintain this beautiful icon and the surrounding park. It is one of the most beautiful places in all of Coeur d'Alene, and I especially enjoy working there. We also would like to thank the city attorney and the city manager for their extensive hours put into the most recent lease negotiation. We feel very confident that the lease demonstrates the active partnership, both mutually benefiting both parties and our community the most. HREI has been in existence for twenty-seven years, providing resources to the most vulnerable and educating our community on human rights issues that impact us broadly, regionally, locally, nationally, and globally. There are many advocacy agencies, but we are the rare, only one of a couple dozen in the entire United States that focuses on education. At the Human Rights Education Institute, it is our mission to celebrate diversity in human rights by educating, raising awareness, and recognizing the value of all humanity. We do this through education programs and events that bring unique perspectives for discussion and provide proactive solutions to challenging community issues. The way I like to describe this to the general public is if your rights have been violated, like by an employment person, then we send you to the Idaho Commission of Human Rights. But if five people's rights show up at my door, then we work with the Idaho Commission of Human Rights to provide education to that business. That's our role. We are so very lucky to have the institute centrally located in Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, with a mission focus in eastern Washington, northern Idaho, and western Montana. We serve fifty-five school districts within that region. Tonight, I am here to encourage you to learn more about HREI and the services we provide. We are on the front line of bullying prevention measures in our school districts, and we work closely with counselors, SROs, social workers, and mental health providers. We track discrimination and harassment incidences and share data with national, state, and local officials. We provide resources and referrals to appropriate agencies when there is potential to harm citizens. May I continue?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. We participate at state and local collectives that address the needs of foster youth, both unaccompanied and those being transferred out of harmful situations. We have social work internships that serve in cooperative places such as local schools, the Safe Passage Children's Resource Center, and the Family Assessment Center at Children's Village. We often find the wandering citizen needing support, whether homeless or alone, or looking for a meal, which we provide. We supervise more than fifteen thousand hours per year of youth and adult court-appointed community service hours and work closely with diversion programs. We are only one of two entities that can supervise a child under the age of sixteen due to our strict background checks. We are host to a human rights consortium that focuses on training with companies and partners with the Idaho Human Rights Commission under the Department of Labor. We have established a regional accessibility committee and a new body of work that's just beginning centered on the challenges that individuals with disabilities face in our community. We partner with more than four dozen other critical action nonprofits in the region for meeting space, awareness, special events, and community conversations that align our mission and community needs and issues. We partner with the Coeur d'Alene Tribe and Coeur d'Alene Casino and other ethnic groups to bring local cultural heritage to the forefront. We are a member of the Coeur d'Alene Arts and Culture Alliance and lead off the exhibits for the monthly art walk. We serve on the Regional Strengthening Families Leadership Board, which is a coalition that serves to protect children from trauma, and participate on the Idaho Nonprofit Center State Conference team. We have been sought out to train other nonprofits in our volunteer and grant-writing models because they are exceptional. We have fifty-three student and job internships in the last five years, many of which have become military officers, lawyers, international peace workers, teachers, social workers, scientists, police officers, environmentalists, forestry, and much more. We are a shelter-in-place for the county buildings and training locations for multiple first responder agencies in the region where speakers are hosted. In closing, we have been through an extensive negotiation, which I again appreciate so much, and I am certain there are many questions. We consider ourselves a collaborative partner and share lead parts throughout our strategic plan in the previous CDA twenty-thirty and envisioned CDA action plans. On behalf of the board and thirty-five volunteers that share in our mission, we respectfully request the approval of our new lease and help HREI maintain its stronghold as a light of hope to those that need it. We look forward to our continued partnership.
Thank you, Jeanette. Susan Knudsen. Welcome to town, Susan.
Thanks. Good evening, council and mayor, city staff, and also our community, and thanks for your grace for that extra minute tonight. National Disability Independence Day is on July twenty-sixth, and it commemorates the signing of the Americans with Disabilities Act, the ADA, on the same day signed in nineteen ninety. The day celebrates the anniversary of the ADA thirty-five years ago and also serves as a way to bring awareness and break down barriers that individuals with disabilities are faced with every day. This year, the theme is "We Belong Here and We Are Here to Stay." People with disabilities have more visibility than ever before, thanks to much work done by so many over the years. They are no longer locked away in institutions to be excluded from mainstream society, but now they are more likely to be recognized for their abilities, gifts, talents, skills, and also freedoms that are finally being recognized by society at large. Stigmas still exist, and things will only change with more opportunities for awareness and understanding. The ADA provides protection from employment discrimination as well as better access to goods, services, and communications for people with disabilities. This national day marks a timeline of change that has developed over the past thirty-five years, where each change improves mobility and safety for people with disabilities. Beyond structural changes, the ADA Act has motivated designers to enhance technology. Often, physical limitations restrict a person's ability to access legal or health information, and new assisted technologies make it possible to obtain the necessary information. As accessibility improves, the world continues to change in other ways, too. Many of today's brick-and-mortar businesses are ADA compliant, not all of them, but most of them. However, as more businesses switch to online versions, their websites need to be accessible, too. With each advancement in technology, designers need to incorporate multifunctional approaches to fit every ability. This day celebrates the freedom the ADA inspires with forward-thinking design and technology. If you are an employer, or designer, or city leader, consider how accessible your business is to people with disabilities as consumers, but also as prospective employees or producers. The ADA empowers people with disabilities to speak up for their rights, too. Please offer them a seat at your table. In honor of ADA Day this year, I'd like to say thank you to some of those who are making a difference in awareness and inclusion, making our community more accessible in North Idaho. First, the Museum of North Idaho for their accessible patio, ramp, and elevator to the third floor of their new building. Their offices are on the third floor, and this elevator indicates that they recognize they can hire someone who uses a mobility device. I would also like to recognize the spacing inside the new museum for their large areas between displays that make the museum more accessible inside as well as outside. I would also like to recognize Jeremy Seda, IT Accessibility Coordinator at North Idaho College, for his work to bring the annual Accessibility Camp CDA to NIC. This year, the symposium is on July thirtieth and thirty-first at the Edmundstir Student Union Building and features speakers providing informative talks and workshops on many topics of digital accessibility and document accessibility. The last thank you goes to CityLink and all they do to make our community accessible with their transportation services. Public transportation is more than just going from point A to point B. It's about access to opportunities and community engagement, allowing invisibles with individuals with disabilities to navigate their communities independently. Paratransport provides safe, convenient transportation options for people who are unable to utilize fixed route services due to limitations. I'd like to encourage other area businesses and organizations and churches to follow suit of the three I mentioned tonight and make attempts to gain awareness and understanding in your space and world for greater access for people with disabilities, to not only be included, but to belong, not just as consumers, but as also producers. ADA Day is July twenty-sixth. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Lee Wayman. Lee? Welcome.
Hello. My name's Lee Wayman. I'm a member of the Medical Reserve Corps, and I attended the Eleventh Avista Public Safety Power Shut-Off Preparedness Presentation at Panhandle Health District on the twenty-fourth. The presentation was done by Todd Kiesby, and he said, at that time, that only thirteen were planned. It identified wildfire risk feeders in our area and the criteria which Avista will use to respond to power shut-offs. Avista expects more power shut-offs with longer durations. I was able to talk to Councilman Gabriel at the meeting they had on the seventh, and he was going to see what options were available to tell people about the change in the Avista power shut-off. And I've talked to a lot of people. Most people were not aware of any of this, and as a consequence, I printed out these, and the highlighted part shows them where they can go online and access the complete presentation. It's, well, I hope the council will look into this serious public safety issue, and I appreciate that you allowed me to speak about it.
Oh, we appreciate your concern.
Thank you again for your consideration, and if anybody would like this so they can look up about the Avista presentation. Well, if there's other people that are interested in being at the presentation.
Thank you, Lee. We're moving along.
Politician.
Thank you.
He's handing them out.
Announcement, city council?
Well, I would just acknowledge that, you know, we're in tight budget season, and that's for sure and everything, but, you know, within the last week or so, I saw that we had a press release and some stuff from the governor and the actual, the end-of-the-year city, well, state revenues in some categories actually produced some surplus, and, you know, it won't dig us out of everything, but that's way better. I couldn't dig down to see what liquor tax was doing, but some of the other ones. So at least that's some hope on the horizon.
So that makes you happy, yes?
Yeah.
Thanks, Dan. Kristi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to thank Richard for that beautiful invocation. We've heard a lot of really nice invocations sitting up here, but really, that one really touched my heart. Thank you, Richard.
Hearing none. I've got a couple. I would like to appoint Duncan Menzies to the Arts Commission.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Duncan Menzies to the Arts Commission.
Second.
And move down second. Questions, comments? He's kind of a theater guy, so it should be kind of giving a little He's kind of a theater guy, so it should be kind of giving a little bit more juice to that.
Ah, one of them.
Yeah, discussion. Roll call.
Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
English?
Yes.
Thank you all. One more thing is tomorrow McEwen Park's got the fun dancing family music thing happening, so if you're not, if you're out hanging around, I think it's four to seven. Might help to come down. It's free. We're trying something new, Parks guys. They got it all mowed. It looks nice out there. And then Fire Department on Sunday is doing the rain day, so if you've never played in the rain, come down, they're gonna be shooting. We're seeing it, but it's going out there. Mike's working on it. All right, that's all I've got. You guys, we're good. Let's move on.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented, including Resolution Number twenty-five dash zero-three-five.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion? Questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Wood?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
Evans?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Gookin?
Affirmative.
English?
Yes.
Other business, Resolution two-five-oh-three-three, approval of a new license with the Human Rights Education Institute for the building at four-one-four West Fortgrounds Drive. Randy, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Question before council tonight is whether the city should enter into a new lease agreement with the Human Rights Education Institute for, as the mayor mentioned, the building at four-fourteen West Fortgrounds Drive. The proposed lease starts at page fifty-one of your council packet. The city's history with this property is long and convoluted, going back more than a hundred and twenty years. I'm sure you'll be happy to hear that I'm not going to cover all of that period of time. This building sits at lots forty-eight and forty-nine of the Fort Sherman Abandon Military Resolution, this building right here that I'm indicating on the slide. For many years, it served as a substation for railroad and station purposes. The Coeur d'Alene and Spokane Railway Company once used it to house large batteries to provide backup power sources for the electric train that ran between Spokane and Coeur d'Alene. The company later folded into the Great Northern Railroad Company and eventually became Burlington Northern. In nineteen oh-four, the United States government donated twenty acres of this, of Lot forty-eight, to the city. The Act of Congress stated, and I quote, "For the use of said municipality as a public park and which shall be used for such purpose exclusively." That twenty acres became City Park, Memorial Field, currently some pickleball courts and This shows you the parts of lots forty-eight on the left and Lot forty-nine on the right, and you can see how the building sits right on the boundary line between those lots. The city also obtained a land patent from the United States government in nineteen sixty-seven for parts of Lot forty-nine. The land patent provided that this land would revert to the United States government if it was devoted to a use other than for park and recreational purposes and uses reasonably incident thereto. Now, the city can possibly use the property for other purposes, but it would have to go through the formal process of obtaining the consent of the Secretary of the Interior, which, given the history of this property, could take years if it occurred at all. As Dave Yaden said in nineteen seventy-eight, "This property has been the subject of five Acts of Congress, five executive orders, two Rights of Way Grants, and five recreation and public purpose patents." I would add to that list at least four deeds, a bill of sale, three leases, and a sublease. The Bureau of Land Management manages the property. In nineteen sixty-six, the Bureau of Land Management approved a master plan submitted by the city for this area. In August nineteen seventy-five, the BLM approved a revised master plan. So originally, there were a lot of buildings, commercial buildings located on this property and under the leases from Burlington Northern, including what was then known as the Senex Building. In nineteen seventy-seven, very significantly, the city contacted the BLM to ask if, under the land patents and the Acts of Congress, the Senex Building could be used as a museum, or could it be used for police or fire operations? At that time, the BLM said that a museum was appropriate, but use for police and fire operations would require a formal application for change of use to the Secretary of the Interior. So in August of nineteen seventy-seven, the city entered into an agreement with the Museum of North Idaho for the Senex Building. Over the next several years, the city continued negotiating with Burlington Northern to acquire this building, which was called the Substation, or the Powerhouse, or the Subpowerhouse, or simply the Brick Building. Burlington Northern finally deeded the building to the city, subject to existing restrictions, in nineteen eighty-nine. The Brick Building was not initially habitable, so a sublease was entered into between the Museum of North Idaho and what was called the Coeur d'Alene Cultural Center as the building was being restored. I'm not entirely sure why it was done this way, but council approved a lease with the city and the museum and the sublease on November twenty-first, nineteen eighty-nine. The sublease had a term of twenty-five years. After the restoration work was complete, however, a new agreement was entered into between the city and the Cultural Center directly for a term of fifty years. The Cultural Center dissolved in two thousand and two, and in July of two thousand and three, the city entered into a lease with HREI for the operation of a Human Rights Education Center with offices, meeting rooms, and exhibition areas. All of these were deemed a permissible civic use, similar to a museum. The initial term of that lease was two years, beginning December one, two thousand and three, and the lease agreement provided for a series of five-year extensions through June thirtieth of twenty thirty. The extensions, of course, were dependent on HREI complying with all the terms of the lease agreement. One of the terms of the original lease agreement was the payment of rent in the annual amount, in the amount of one thousand twelve dollars per month, beginning with the second year of the lease. However, the agreement also provided that HREI would be entitled to a credit against rents for improvements made to the building pursuant to a plan of renovation, which was to be provided annually. In October of twenty seventeen, an amendment to the lease agreement was approved by council, recognizing that HREI had made improvements to the building totaling one hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred seventy-four dollars and forty-two cents, which entirely offset the rent due through, through December tenth of twenty seventeen. Since then, HREI has made no rental payments, but has continued to pay the utilities associated with the use of the building as required by the original lease. And on January twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, just this year, HREI submitted a payment to the city of ten thousand dollars to reimburse for a roof repair. HREI has informed me of other improvements. You were provided some, a document of a list of improvements through twenty seventeen. I don't have any documentation for any of those expenses, or whether there was a plan of renovation that covered those. Bear in mind that the improvements that could be offset are capital improvements. Some of the, some of the things on the list are not actually capital improvements. If HREI failed to make rental payments or offsets to those payments by capital improvements, the city could declare a default in the lease agreement, give HREI thirty days to cure and terminate the lease upon a failure to cure. Instead, the city began negotiations to enter into a new lease with HREI. These negotiations began at least in twenty eighteen. Several proposed new leases were submitted to HREI. There was give and take between the two, but nothing came to a final agreement. The city had numerous discussions with HREI about the delinquency and the need for a new lease. Alternate uses for the building were discussed and considered. Eventually, in June of this year, HREI and city staff agreed to the terms of a new lease, subject, of course, to approval by council. HREI is an Idaho nonprofit corporation in good standing, having been incorporated in nineteen ninety-eight. It relies on donations and grants to fund its operations. HREI has made extensive improvements to this old building over several years, often through grants, and HREI provides a service to the community. As I indicated, there are limitations on the uses to which this building can be put under the Act of Congress in nineteen oh-four and the land patent of nineteen sixty-seven. And for these reasons, the successive city administrations thought it reasonable to allow HREI to continue to occupy the building as it had for the prior twenty years while the city attempted to reach an agreement that would both benefit the city and allow HREI to continue its operations in the building, which has, again, significant use restrictions. The proposed lease that's before you is for an initial three-year term, which would take us through September thirtieth of twenty twenty-eight. There's one automatic renewal for an additional three years. For the first twelve months, HREI would pay utilities, sewer, gas, water, electric cable, telephone, et cetera, as rent. For the remaining two years of the initial term, HREI will also pay five hundred dollars per month, and during any renewal term, the rent would be one thousand dollars per month plus utilities. Unlike the original lease, this new lease can be terminated by the city if council decides not to appropriate funds in any fiscal year to pay for the services required of the city, which includes general repair and maintenance of the exterior of the building and grounds, including the parking lots. This is called a non-appropriation clause and is required by Idaho law. In addition, the lease can be terminated by the city, of course, if the city decides it needs to perform some significant construction on the building and it can't be occupied. HREI will continue to have the right to make capital improvements to offset rent payments, but the proposed lease requires written consent by the city and that any improvement represent a capital improvement to the building. HREI may, as it did under the original lease, use the building for the purpose of operating a Human Rights Education Center, including office space meetings, classrooms, exhibitions, and other similar uses, as would generally advance the purposes of HREI, but the new lease specifically prohibits partisan political activities by HREI on the premises. So council must decide whether to approve the new lease with the Human Rights Education Institute for the building at four-fourteen West Fortgrounds Drive, which it has occupied for almost twenty-two years. And staff would stand for questions if council has any.
Council, questions?
Well, thank you, Randy. That was a very in-depth presentation, and Jeanette, thank you for your earlier comments. I think there's no question of the impact of this institution and the support for the mission of this institution. All of council has supported that for over two decades. What we have tonight before us is also a business decision, so without offending anyone's sensibilities, we kind of want to, I want to peel through some of the business part of it, because when we make our decision, we need to justify it and defend it. So, Randy, the earlier, the last lease expired in twenty seventeen, and at that time, the monthly rent was being taken off of the improvements to the building. There was a set amount, quite a large amount over that time, but I believe that you said that that monthly was a thousand twelve dollars. So all these years later, though, that's a cut in half. Maybe you could explain, or Troy could maybe talk about that. I mean, we need to, to be able to speak to what is market and why, how did we come to that decision?
Well, the, the, in terms of the amount of the proposed lease, that was just a negotiation between us and HREI, them telling us what it is they can afford based on the fact that they, their income is donations and grants. Grants are, are being restricted currently, and that was just the, the number that we thought was appropriate for, it's not, certainly not market value, but it is appropriate for their ability, considering the restrictions on the use of the building.
Okay. In, in, in the agreement, I don't see any language to pay back the last seven and a half years, and I understand you're, you're explaining to me their limited ability to raise funds, and I, I think that's true, and I think the director tries very hard to raise funds. Again, just looking at it as a business decision, there isn't any language at all for the last seven and a half years. Can you talk about that?
Well, let me, let me just correct one thing. The, the lease is not expired. The original lease would go through twenty thirty unless the city declared a default, which we have not. So the lease is ongoing, and, but because of the perceived default, the lack of rental payments, the lack of proof of capital improvements, that gives the city the opportunity to say, okay, we need a new, we're, we need a new lease. The old lease, we could declare a default and terminate it, but let's just try to get a new lease. So this is a new start, is what we're talking about. So, I mean, it's certainly up to council what the council wants to receive for this property in terms of a lease, but it was considered, let's get this thing started again with a, with a payment plan that they could likely follow. With the alternative, we would have an empty building, the city would be paying utilities, and we probably could not put anybody else in that building.
Okay, so that's my, my next question, if I may, Mr. Mayor, one more. And it'd be to Troy. Troy, and maybe Randy, maybe you as well, because I, I believe by statute, we are supposed to at least examine our facilities for our own use before we're allowed to lease them.
That's the implication of statute, which says that if, we can lease property that is not of current use to the city.
Okay, and, well, I'll, I'll just follow up later with Troy. Thank you.
Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we have a long list of people that are wanting to get into this building? There are five oh-one C-threes.
I have not heard of anyone approached the city. Troy might know.
And, I mean, it's a desire, wonderful desirable spot, for sure, but the cost to us if we didn't do something would, could be pretty big, couldn't it?
It would be, we would have to maintain it, which would require us to pay certain utilities to keep it functioning so it doesn't degrade any further. It is a old building, which requires a lot of maintenance. I think there's been a concern about a wall that's maybe falling down. Let me add to that. We have worked on that and remedied that situation, thanks to your Cracker Jack staff and working with our own engineering department and our building department to rectify that wall that is closest to the park.
Okay. I had a couple more questions, but they left me, so thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. English?
Sure. Just to clarify, as far as the permitted uses, you know, and according to their name and what they do, I mean, but education, you know, related training kind of activities, obviously, so... So that's an acceptable use. But as a pure, you know, fire police substation, you know, another police house or something, you know, which we've talked about needing down, that, that wouldn't be, if I understand, just as a pure police substation, but training activities are, yeah.
According to the BLM and the Act of Congress and the land patent, yes, you're correct. It would have to be the, we'd have, it would take an Act of Congress to, to allow us to do that.
Well, except not if it's a training thing, right?
Well, we have, that wasn't discussed with the BLM. The, the Act of Congress talks about it being used as a public park and for recreation and related or incidental uses. The BLM determined that use as a museum, education, civic, was permissible, but not as an operational base for, for police or fire. I don't think training was raised with the BLM.
Kiki?
Okay, so follow up on that, then. There wouldn't really, I'm trying to think of any other of our city uses that we could use it for. I mean, you could just store lawn mowers in there? I mean, I don't think that's a public use. So there doesn't seem to be anything that you could really put in there that the city could use it for. I'm just grappling with that. Quick question, though. Was it in the prior lease that any of the improvements had to be specifically identified as capital improvements?
The requirement of the lease was that they, that any improvements had to be made pursuant to what was called a plan of renovation in each year, which is something that HREI would submit to the city for approval.
And so that didn't happen?
Or? I have not seen a plan of renovation from HREI.
Troy?
Yeah, we were not receiving what I would call a plan of renovation. We probably heard some of the improvements that were being made. They also had a change in staff and some of the records were not as easily accessible where they were looking to document what they had spent to call it capital. So that was another faux pas that occurred during that period of time.
So it may have existed, but it may have been vague? Is that fair?
It may have been listed and it may-
It may have existed, but it may have been a vague plan of renovation.
I would, yeah, that would be a good way to quote it.
Okay. So then, I want to get my head around the numbers, I think, because Christie said there's been no rent paid since?
2017.
2017.
2017. In here, we have this, the big number of just shy of 150,000, that apparently there was good documentation on that, and that was all credited up until that period. And then we have this new document that has $60,000.
Through, through 2017, yes.
But was that through? Because it, so that's 2006 through 2017. So what we don't know is, was this included in the 150?
No. Well, the 1, the 150 was approved in 2007, but the calculation would have taken it through 2017. So none of those expenses, I think on that sheet, there may even have been one or two that were incurred before council approved that 140-some thousand in improvements.
Okay. What I'm trying to get to is, maybe I'm trying to make it too easy, but we have this rental space of time that we approved, giving them credit for improvements in the just shy of 150. It looks like what they're saying is, we have another 60,000 that we should be getting credited towards backpaid rent. And then you said they submitted a $10,000 roof bill.
Payment.
Payment. But that's not in this 60,000, so that would be 70,000, which would be part of the shy of part. I guess what I'm trying to say is, that what we're expected to get our head around here? That the 150 was accounted for, got them to 2017, the 2017 to now has some other numbers that, that they're trying to say we should be credited towards our, our rent that we didn't pay?
Well, I don't, I don't think it'll ever all come out even, which is why I said, which is why we took the position that we just need to start over, start afresh. You know, maybe the ball was dropped before by us not requiring strict compliance with the lease. Some of those payments on that list are not really capital improvements.
There's, yeah.
So that, that hasn't really been looked at by the city staff to determine if that they're entitled to all or a portion of the credits for that. Again, I haven't seen documentation for any of that, other than that sheet.
I guess what I'm trying to say, the smart thing is to start fresh and then, on both sides, be more diligent with what's happening moving forward. And there's been good negotiations to that. I just was trying to get my head around if whether there was less of a, a loss than what we were thinking, because there was possibly more improvements done to the building.
Well, that's certainly HREI's position, and that's why they presented that document to you. And council can certainly consider, consider that for what it's worth.
Mr. Gookin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Randy, earlier, you mentioned, you were talking about using this building as a police substation, and you said that would take an Act of Congress or God or someone.
Approval by the Secretary of the Interior, at least.
Okay.
Whoever that is.
At least that's one guy or person. But I'm curious, because we have a public safety building in the same area. So did it take a request from the Secretary of Interior to put up that public safety building?
You mean the Cootney County?
Nope. I mean, just south of the HREI, there's a little-
He used to call it Boopsie's Bunker.
It was Boopsie's Bunker. Thank you. And it's just a, it's called Public Safety. It's a little concrete building, and it's sitting on the same property, and it's used, it says Court Lane Police and Fire Department on it. And I'm curious whether we got an excuse from the Secretary of Interior for that.
I have not seen any permission. I have not seen any complaint from the BLM that that was not a permitted use. I do, I do know, in going through a notebook full of the history of this building, that the BLM did complain about Burlington Northerns leasing several buildings on this property for commercial purposes. And so they did, they did approach Burlington Northern about those buildings. Those buildings have been destroyed. I don't, apparently they didn't care about this little building.
Okay, well, let's, let's pretend they don't care. This is, I remember a few years ago, when we had Mayor Widmire, that he went on a crusade against property that was owned by the city and leased. And we unloaded a lot of property throughout the city, because as, I don't know if he said it, but I said it, we should not be a landlord. One of the problems with being a landlord is that, all of a sudden, we get to become the jerks when we have to evict someone. And therefore, it becomes political. And it further becomes political, because this is a nonprofit. And I'm always uncomfortable with a relationship like this with a nonprofit, because it, again, it allows us to be judged by the nonprofit instead of the fiscal responsibility we have to the taxpayers to ensure that we are being fiduciaries. I realize that we do HUD grants to nonprofits, and that's fine. It's competitive, it's by law. But in this case, it becomes a sensitive issue, because we're not being judged by an entity not paying rent for seven years or however long it's been, but by what the entity does. And that makes it more difficult. But yet, fiduciarily, we have a responsibility to the taxpayer to make sure that if we are going to be landlords, which I wish we weren't, that we collect rent. And this is something that happens in the private sector, too. And people do get evicted. I remember there was an apartment complex that was shut down up on Ironwood, and we got complaint, I don't know if you all got complaint, yeah, Dan English remembers getting that, we got complaints, what can the city do about this? Well, you know, and there were hard luck stories, people who were on Medicaid and didn't have a job, and they were sick, and they got kicked out of their place to live in the middle of winter. And that's just the market. And that's why I believe there was wisdom in saying, we should not be landlords, so we don't put ourselves in this situation. That's, all that aside. Given all that, though, I think there is an advantage to having something in there, and they're in there. And maintaining the building, having a presence, means that we're not paying the utilities. But I do believe we need to set it as our goal, to find a purpose for that building and to find a tenant who pays the rent. And I believe in giving HREI a year to make sure that happens. And after a year, we can look at, like the statute says, we can look at another purpose for the building, or something else, or find another tenant. I think that would be fair. And I would just like to throw that out to see what council would think about that.
Mr. English?
Well, backing up a little, just, and, and I think some of what Kiki was talking about and the, I think, and I'm, I'm all good that we kind of like start fresh, start at zero, and then we've got a, like Dan, you know, we have a number of things that we have to balance. And of course, the city, you know, of course, we support the mission and the fact that they've been there 22 years. I think we've, you know, shown that, we're all part of different things that support that, and some of their subsidiary organizations. And I think I do like the idea, but it's probably time to evaluate. One thing, though, with this whole thing about the credit for, you know, credit for capital improvements, this and that, you know, when I look at the stuff that got approved, you know, I don't see it as so much, well, that was a plan that we needed to do, and, which I'm glad now that if, whatever we do, it sounds like we got to buy off on it. But I see it as more like, well, it's stuff that, man, it's, you know, we can't survive in the summer, you got to put air, you can't have the roof leaking, I mean, stuff that was just kind of, you know, mission critical, maybe even life safety kind of stuff. So that's not a plan. I mean, that's just like keeping the, the basics. So if we, whatever we do going forward, I think we have to be very intentional about that kind of a plan. And, and I do kind of like the idea of, you know, taking a year to evaluate, and the city, so I mean, nothing's going to happen. Also, knowing that there are so many organizations that support the mission and everything, and I've been part of the nonprofit world for a long time, and I'm guessing there's a whole lot of folks that, if they heard, man, they're going to be out there, you know, might step up with some space or something. So who knows what opportunities are out there? But, but I like the idea of, yeah, we need to, we need to take a, a look at this, so.
Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Amy.
First of all, I want to thank HREI and Jeanette for all the work you do in our community. We're very thankful you're here. I want to piggyback a little bit on Kiki's questions about the improvements, renovations, capital expenses. And we have a list that was provided to us from 2006 through 2017 that we've referenced several times, plus the payment of $10,000 for the roof. What I'm not seeing is anything from 2018 to present day. And we know with that building that you've had expenses. Do you have that? Or have, has the city received it? Because I, I feel like it's being underrepresented, underrepresented of the amount of improvements that HREI must have put into this building for the last several years.
The city manager and I met on May 5th of 2023, and we discussed the surveillance that was put on the building, the day of caring expenditures for the last couple of years. But that, I have been at a summer camp working this week, and so I came into town from across the lake, 45 minutes, just to be here tonight, pivoting last night because I saw the agenda packet. And so I did not have time to pull any QuickBooks reports, and I'm happy to provide that for, for all of that documentation. The surveillance itself is 6,000. The, the day of caring, you know, averages a couple thousand per year over that period of time. We have the $1,600 electrical bill that was for lighting on the outside, safety, some safety stuff. And that's just off the top of my head.
Thank you.
So, and then the roof itself. The roof itself was a lot more. When we first put in for the roof grant, the roof cost and bid was at 19,000. By the time the work was done, it was at 65-plus, right? Am I correct? I can't remember. It was upwards of 65,000. So the grant that was supported at that time, because the, the time period between when the grant was written, the cost of labor and construction went up that much over that period of time. It was through COVID, and it wasn't able to be done until afterward. And so had we written the grant at that time, we would have had a different outlay of grant capital that could have been provided to the city. But we were working off of a previously written grant, and we actually asked for an additional amount. And that's what we got from that, from the Idaho Heritage Trust.
Thank you. I just don't want it to be missed that you did have additional expenses that we're not seeing.
And the expenses that you're looking at here are the capital expenses that were before my time. I was not the executive director, Annalise Miller was the board chair, Lita Burns was on the board at that time, and Joanne Harvey, and all three of them submitted that 2017 report. And so my interaction with the city manager was to reestablish that report as part of the basis for that period of time, which should put us in five to six years of payment, rental payment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kiki?
Mr. Mayor, I, I think a couple things here. I think Dan, both Dan's, had some really good, good input on a direction here. I think, I'd like, if I can, maybe summarize, I think council is feeling like a highest and best use of this building is something staff needs to take a look at. And maybe we aren't doing that right now. Maybe there's something else that we're missing, and I kind of hear that that's what council really has a desire for staff to do. And that, so I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the lease as it is right now for the three-year term, under the financial plan and details that are in there. And then add a direction to staff that they take a look at the highest and best use and potential tenants prior to entering into any renegotiations of the lease before it expires in this three-year term.
I'll second.
Mr. Mayor, can I offer an amendment?
Sure.
You, I was thinking exactly like you, with one caveat. I would like us to do exactly that. They need some stability, and they need to know that they have a home. And so, but what I would like to say is, within the next 12 months, before then, but deadline, 12 months, that we've taken a hard look at the best use for this facility, and then we come back here in a year, and we can all discuss it, and if there's no other use for it, the other two years just keep going.
If we're kind of in discussion mode, if you don't mind. I, I think about that, but I also know that it's a short period of time for one large entity to move out and reestablish their programming, and to find another entity to get out of their own lease and move in. So I think that if staff is doing the work that we all want by putting out that it may be available when this lease expires, it will give any of our potential future tenants the ability to take a look at, because they aren't probably on month-to-month leases, they're probably on two- to five-year leases. It gives them a chance to look at, hey, if we're looking at a move and we could be a tenant in that building, we, we have some time to get, not renew our lease. So that three-year window, from a business perspective, gives a new potential tenant a period of time to look at their business model, as well as HREI to say, here's where we can perform, and/or if we need to move, we have the ability to structure and set ourselves up to successfully do that.
So I, I heard everything you said, I just see it a little bit differently, but I'm going to let, these two are trying to speak.
Mr. Gookin?
Thank you. And again, this is why the city should not be a landlord, because right now, we're negotiating agreements and contracts, and this is BS. This is beyond the scope of what local government should do. We should not be landlords. If you want to solve this problem, yes, we could, we could go with the lease, but we're just kicking the can down the road. So I would, that's why I said one year. I said one year, I think, is fair, because it gives them time to do something else, gives us time to look at what else we could do with this building by statute, to make sure that we have, it's not needed for any other city purpose. And they haven't paid rent. And I'm willing to let them slide on that for another year, and then find somewhere else to go. We should not be landlords. It's not our job.
Mr. English?
Okay. Mr. English? Okay. Well, and as you know, I'm kind of a split-the-baby kind of guy, so instead of 12 months or 36, I would like to propose, we look at 18, which would be through the end of the year 2026, and so it's a nice round number, gives a little more time, but also, I think there is a certain, I don't know, urgency isn't the right word, but I do think that, you know, it's only fair to everybody that we come to something, and it's not going to take forever for us to decide if we've got a use. And actually, I've been in the nonprofit world, and like, you know, moved costs, which had a whole bunch of stuff and, and everything, and it's like, we had about a 60-day notice, whoa, we got it, you know, and so it can be done, and there's a lot of community support. So, you know, that would be my counter, is look at 18, so, as we're negotiating.
Let me go back to this people haven't. Kenny.
Unfortunately, we are in the landlord business right now, aren't we?
Yeah.
And I'm curious at what the hurry would be to get them almost, it almost sounds to me like we want them to get out of the lease, and if they become good leasees, are we, is that appropriate? Are we happy with that? Or are we looking specific at the Plan B, which could be something else? And I'm just asking, because I've not been part of any of these discussions, and I'm with you, I would love to not be in the landlord business, but unfortunately, today we are. So I very much, the three years, I'm fine with, but I'm, I think it's very appropriate for us to look at it sooner, though. I think we should look at a use of it sooner than then.
Amy, you got anything on this?
I, nothing additional, no.
Okay. So we came to no conclusions here. Kristi.
I still had a comment. Thank you. Well, again, all of us support the mission and the good work. That's not the question. It's all about, do we need the facility for ourselves? And so how do we, how do we help them carry forward with their mission for as long as possible, until maybe, because I think down the road, we will need it for, for our own purposes, until they're able to secure another facility? But also, take care of our own needs, is what we're supposed to focus on as a city. So we talk about what could go in there. You know I have advocated for public safety. Randy says a police department can't go there, but an educational wing of the police department can go there, and would happily go there. The crime prevention programs could be ran out of there, maybe that could be with them. That hasn't been discussed. There, there's the volunteer program that can be ran out of there, because those are educational. And so I, I think it is really important that we take a look of what our needs are, and we address those. As you know, the police department is out of space, they just, they increased their locker size, and that's it. So I would, I'm fine with splitting the difference of 18 months, because I sincerely want them to succeed, I do. But if we need that facility, we should be talking about that. So I would suggest that we come back in 18 months, we have the real discussion, and if we don't need the space, then we're done talking about it, and their lease just carries on.
So what do we formally need to do, amend the one-year motion?
I think.
So we have a motion on the floor for the three years.
Oh, oh, that's what.
That's where we started on this.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Mayor, and I, and I think you're right, Kristi, I think, this is great discussion, because I, don't the police already have a relationship with movies in the park with, or is that through the park?
No, we do.
Is that HREI? Please, is that with HREI, or is that with the?
So the police department does movies in the park, and they allow us to come and do the pre-movie activities, and so we support the police department in that effort.
But I, thank you, I appreciate that. I guess I'm, what I'm saying is, we're getting the information out to staff to say, we, we want this, this building looked at, and a lot of these ideas, there may be more. Dan, I'm sorry, we're in the landlord business, but apparently, we have been dealing with this building for 100 years, so it looks like another three are probably not going to kill us, but I think we have some good time to take a look, a hard look at what the highest and best use of that building will be, and, and not just rush through to get something done, and get a tenant out who maybe is the right tenant to be there. Maybe we add some space to it, maybe we talk with that tenant and say, we, we want some police education in here, we want some fire education in here, we want, we want to, maybe in 18 months, say, we want to negotiate some amendments to the lease, to add some space, or maybe it doesn't even need to be an amendment to the lease, it can just be a partnership that allows us some, some good cooperative use. So that's where I'm at with it. I, I think, I'm glad it's cleaned up, thank you for all the negotiations on that, I'm glad that we have a fresh start, and I think there's no sense in going backwards through the mud to get all of these dollars, but it, I think it's closer than what we thought as far as unpaid rent went, and I feel better about that. So that's, I'm sitting with my motion still, that we renew as is, and I think staff got a lot of direction from the conversations that need to happen.
May I mention one more thing?
So I'm going to say, it's been said to me that we are landlords, so I'm going to put on my landlord hat. If someone hasn't paid rent for seven years, I'm not renewing a lease. That's the way landlords work. There is not a single human being in this city who rents property, who would renew a lease for someone who has not paid the rent. And I'm offering a year, so I'm being a bad landlord. But only government is that stupid.
I, I think it's debatable whether they've paid the rent or not, and we've established that, so.
Are we done?
Oh, no, we're going to, it'll pass.
No, I, well, there's a motion, but then.
It's a motion, let's just work through this one, and see where it goes. Is that good?
Passage fails, or tiebreaker.
So Kelly, you with all us? Hang in there, hang in there. All right, so the motion is asking for the three years, correct? So.
Mr. Mayor, I think, I think technically, Councilmember Wood offered an alternative or amendment to the motion. There was no second to that, so we should declare that one dead, or wait for a second before we move on to the primary motion.
I think it's dead.
We're going to kill it.
Well, if I can, then I would make an alternative motion for 18 months.
This is like the KCRCC.
Second.
Is this the way they do it?
Yeah.
Oh, wow. Well, Dan, I don't really want to recognize you right now. Go ahead, jump in.
Well, I just did.
And I seconded.
And he seconded, okay, so we're going to start with them, and work backwards. And you're at 18.
Start with the amendment.
18 months, yes?
Yep, through the end of calendar 26.
Here we go.
And if, if I'm, if I heard right, it was 18 months, and, and then the assessment, and if the assessment is that we don't have a use for it, then the three years just plays out. Is that right?
Well, at the end of that, we, we do that, so, yeah, and it's pretty much ready to go.
Can you do, sorry, Ms. Mayor, can, can you do that legally? Say that we're taking a three-year lease, but now we're making it 18 months, and somehow, but?
You know what, I'm going to, I'm going to withdraw that. Let's vote up or down on your three-year.
Yeah, that'll take more time.
Hang in there, Kelly, hang in there. Randy.
It looks like we're back to the original motion.
Okay. You guys are good with that?
Yep.
Let's go through that. So the original motion is to renew the used lease with the Human Rights Institute for the building at 401, footgrounds for three years. And during that time.
I think the motion was to approve the lease as presented.
As presented, and have staff look for alternative uses over those three years.
Yep.
Okay. Roll call.
Miller?
Aye.
Evans?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Gookin?
No.
English?
No.
Wood?
No.
Mayor McEvers?
What?
Hang on, if I may ask a legal question before.
Excuse me, I have to vote. Yes.
I am asked to ask a legal question of our, of our attorney. According to Idaho Code 501409, a lease must be approved by a vote of one-half plus one members of the full council. I don't believe the American break a tie.
We get education out of the Education Institute.
In real time.
In real time.
I believe that 1409 is talking about setting apart.
Portions of public parks, playgrounds, grounds, from time to time, for various uses, exhibits, ballparks, etc. I think you should be looking at 50-1407.
Okay, so this is, 151409 is leases, conveyance of property. The mayor and council may by resolution authorize the issue of any property not needed for city purpose. Upon such terms, it may be just inequitable. The provisions of Sections 151401 through 151409 shall apply on the vacation or discontinuance of streets, hallways, avenues, blah, 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 vacated, providing that the council of a city, upon a vote of one-half plus one of the members of the full council, may set aside portions of public parks, playgrounds, et cetera, et cetera.
To be used from time to time.
Is that not what we're doing here? A portion of a public park?
For athletic contests, golf links, agricultural exhibits, ballparks, fairs, rodeos, swimming pools, and other amusements. 50-1407 is also deals with leases.
Okay, what does that say, if you could, please?
Very simple, it's one line, I think.
The mayor and council may by resolution authorize the lease of any real or personal property not otherwise needed for city purposes, upon such terms as the city council determines may be just inequitable.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification, I appreciate it.
So it looks like it passed.
It passed.
Okay. Thank you. Randy, can you do something else now? Since we moved past that one? Consent to a sublease with the University of Idaho for a portion of Harbor Center facility to the Coeur d'Alene Tribe. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The University of Idaho has been leasing Harbor Center from the city pursuant to terms of a master lease dated May 13, 2002. That master lease has been amended three times, basically to extend the length of the lease. Current, the Third Amendment, which was effective July 1, 2013, extended the lease through June 30 of 2028. The university has asked, the, and I also have to mention that the rental payments for this have been paid at the rate of $10 per year ever since 2002. The university has asked the city for its consent to sublease the first floor of the south wing of Harbor Center, which had been leased by Lewis and Clark State College, which vacated that portion of the building on June 30 of this year. The university would like to sublease that portion to the Coeur d'Alene Tribe. Tribe will utilize the space to house tribal government services to make access more convenient. Tribal staff in the Natural Resources Department is already heavily involved in education and outreach, research, and community support. The term of the sublease, if approved, would be August 1, 2025, to June 30, 2028, when the current university lease ends. The master lease, which has a provision which was never changed by any of the amendments, that says the tenant may not assign this lease, or sublet any part of the premises, without the landlord's written approval, which approval shall not be withheld unreasonably. The city, as the landlord, has to consent to this sublease, and that is what is before council tonight. There is no financial impact to the city. The city's had a good relationship, working relationship, with both the tribe and the university for many years. The city has, I've been told, no use for the space currently, that was vacated by LCSC, and therefore, the city, sublease would not interfere with city functions, and would, in fact, demonstrate the goodwill the city has toward the tribe and the university. I would stand for any questions.
Questions, council?
Sure, I'll fire one.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay. Go, Dan.
Randy, I, I know you're an attorney, and you don't have to apologize, but you said that basically, this is being presented to us, and if I understood you correctly, we don't really have a choice, it's kind of like we're just saying, okey-dokey?
You cannot reject a sublease unreasonably.
Unreasonably, okay.
So if you have a reason, a cogent, intelligent, pertinent reason.
Okay.
Yes, you have the power to reject a sublease.
So that's, that's the backstop, basically?
It is, it is.
Because I was just wondering, because the language here is, it consents to a sublease, and not just acknowledges the sublease.
Correct. We have to, we have to consent.
Okay, thank you.
As a city.
Kristi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, first of all, just like HREI, the U of I is an incredible educational facility that is in our community, and we're very fortunate. I am a little sad that LCSC has vacated. The vision of the education corridor was NIC, LCSC, and U of I, so that a student could go from start to finish seamlessly. Now, the good news is, is LCSC is on the NIC campus, so there's still some consistency there. Speaking of consistency, I think it's only fair to ask for the same thing, that there's some sort of an assessment, we haven't looked at this building in a long time, I want U of I to stay there, I'm not suggesting anything, I just think, to be consistent, we should also do the same, same look, deep dive, on whether the city needs the space. Not now, but come back to us in a year, and let us know. Or I would say, why don't I just say by 2028, so that we don't have to do this whole thing again? Whatever the term is, come back to us, and let us know if the city needs the space.
There is, there is a difference between the two leases, the original HREI lease and the University of Idaho lease. The University of Idaho lease contemplated that negotiations would occur between the city and the university, for the university to actually purchase the building. Those negotiations, as I understand, have been ongoing for 23 years, and I think are still going on. So it's not quite the same issue in terms of, do we have need for or not? There is an agreement that talks about the sale of the building.
Oh, maybe a little more detail on that?
Does Troy have any information?
So we.
You had to clarify.
So we never have any opportunity to do anything but lease this building?
Well, no, it's, the lease, current lease ends in 2028.
Oh, okay.
After that, it's, it's either renegotiate a lease, or move on.
Mr. Mayor?
Dan.
To clarify, are you saying they are interested in buying it?
Well, I don't want to put words in their mouth, I, I know that there have been discussions.
I'd sure like to, I mean, I wouldn't want to wait three years if there, if there's a potential, because they could still do all of their other partnerships, we need to balance a budget, and.
I don't think that's on the agenda right now.
I don't think we can force them to buy it.
What do you say, Julie, can we force you?
No pressure, Julie, no pressure. So with that, oh, Dan's coming back.
Yeah, coming back. Okay, so I just wanted to say this, when this lease renewed, it was, I was on council, it's for $10 a year. Landlords, we're killing it. And I, and I oppose that, but I assume that they're subletting it to the tribe at market rate.
I have no insider knowledge of that.
No idea, okay. It's out of our purview.
Amy.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 25-036, consenting to a sublease by the University of Idaho for a portion of the Harbor Center facility to the Coeur d'Alene Tribe.
Second. Been moved, and seconded, discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Gookin?
Okay.
English?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
Evans?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, the highlight of the evening. Renata, welcome.
Thank you. All right, I am here before you to talk about amendments to municipal code chapter five point two eight, also known as the massage facility and spa code. Uh, the code was actually first enacted in nineteen sixty-one, so it has been around for a while, something that the city has been interested in keeping a pulse on and making sure that they are appropriately run, and we amended this the last time in two thousand and thirteen. So we've added in the purpose and intent of this code. As you know, in the past, it's kind of been about working with some of the massage facility owners. In two thousand and thirteen, the state took away the right of the city to regulate individual therapists, and they're doing that at a state level. So all we can do is regulate the massage facility owners at our level of government. So we've been doing that. We've added in a little bit of a purpose statement to really understand that there are, um, some, uh, illicit massages that are practicing in our community, um, but we want to protect those businesses that are legitimate. And so we believe the code that we brought forward is a good balance of those things, and we are here to talk about that this evening. So currently, uh, in the city of Coeur d'Alene, we have thirty-one licensed facilities. We have an unknown number of licensed therapists. The state of Idaho licensed them based on their mailing address, and they don't track where they work after they become licensed. So the state, um, can tell us that we have two thousand nine hundred and ninety-five current licensed therapists in the state of Idaho with ten provisional licenses, but not exactly where they're working. Um, we have been working with the stakeholders. We've emailed the licensed facilities in October of two thousand and twenty-four, and April of two thousand and twenty-five, and most recently, July tenth of this month, to let them know we're working on this code and provided them what those code changes are. So as you may have heard in the news, there has been a lot of attention on the illicit facilities throughout the state of Idaho. Um, there have been other cities, including our own, where we've encountered this, Twin Falls, Lewiston, Eagle, Idaho, and Spokane, Washington, all in the last year have experienced that. Throughout the United States, there was a national effort in May of this year, where they kind of did a sting across eighteen different states and found some, uh, human trafficking networks that are occurring throughout the country. So this is something that they're struggling with throughout the entire United States, not just in Idaho. But there are legitimate massage facilities. There's lots of ways to become licensed and certified. There's national certifications, um, and there's the Idaho Division of Occupational and Professional Licenses, actually, is the one who regulates our Idaho therapists. Code amendments are pretty detailed, but I'm just going to hit some of the highlights. Um, we've added in that purpose statement. We've done some housekeeping items that were leftovers of where we talked about individual therapist, and we needed to clean up that language. Um, and then we've added in, what I'm referring to is code enforcement tools, um, but it's enforcing our code, so it's really law enforcement tools, public safety tools. Um, we've added in some inspection opportunities. Um, we have added in a few things regarding English language. What we've encountered is, we have some of the illicit parlors that are operating, and there's no one on site who can speak English, and we have had some problems with the interpretation services. Um, we require records, but we didn't require those records to be done in English. We had a very hard time understanding Mandarin. So, um, we've added some of those things in. Um, we've included the requirement of a floor plan. That's because in some of those, um, illicit massage parlors, they've started adding in bedroom facilities. That doesn't meet our building code, fire code, or our planning code. Um, so this just gives us another opportunity to see how they're planning those spaces. Um, and then, uh, we have referenced what we call residential arrangements being noted. There is a slight, uh, chance that if you do a home occupation, we had one building on Government Way where half was the residential home and the other half was the business. So there are those opportunities where you could have a residential use involved in this type of activity. Um, so that would just be something we're required to be noted on the license application now. Um, some of the other things that we did was under the appeal clarification. Some of our old language said they could have a stay during the appeal period, which meant they could continue to operate. Um, and so we added in some language that it doesn't apply when you've been denied a license. So if you haven't already had a license and you were denied, you don't get to open up you, just because you appealed that denial. Um, the other opportunity we added in was that, um, the, uh, appeal does not give you a stay unless it's requested and determined that there's no harm to the public and you continuing to operate. So maybe there's a paperwork issue, but any of these ones that are doing the illicit sexual activities, they would not get to continue to operate just because they appealed. So our recommendation tonight really is to, um, consider what you've been presented and approve the amendments to municipal code chapter five point two eight, and I stand for questions.
Mr. Gookin?
Thank you. Renata, I apologize I didn't get this to you sooner, because I just noticed it.
Sure.
In the very last section, five twenty-eight, one eighty, alcoholic beverages and drugs prohibited. And section A, it is unlawful to consume al, any alcoholic beverages or liquor, possess an open container of any alcoholic beverage or liquor on the premises of any massage facility or spa. Would this include the Coeur d'Alene Resorts Spa?
Yes, and if you go to section B.
Okay.
It says that it shall not apply to premises that are duly licensed by the State of Idaho Liquor Control Board.
Perfect.
So if they are a licensed facility, they have a beer and wine or alcohol license, then that would not apply.
Outstanding.
And I should have probably clarified, we have been working with other staff on this and very closely with police and have worked in the tools that they've requested, and there is representation here tonight if you have specific questions for law enforcement.
Kristi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Renata, I know the concern of the previous massage parlors was sex trafficking, and we really, police really believed that's what was happening, and council had reason to believe that, and so we denied some licenses. I'm curious about the home occupation or the bedrooms. So we know that in the basement of some of these facilities, there were twin beds, women stacked everywhere. You're saying this will eliminate, like, if law enforcement comes across that, they have reason to immediately take action?
Yes, if it's not in the original approved license packet, yes.
Okay, is there, and it would only be approved if it were a home occupation, like,
Yes.
like you said?
Yes.
I see Captain Walters here. I don't want to embarrass him or make him come all the way up. I, I would just ask briefly, is the police department reviewed all of this, and are they in favor? Thank you. Thank you.
Kiki.
Kenny, did you have your hand up?
I did not.
Thank you. Renata, I, my question, I think, was follow-up to Dan's question. Were the other spa facilities brought in? And the reason is, is I see advertisements all the time with, for spas all over town with your mimosa, free mimosa with your, with your pedicure. And so I looked at that and went, they, they're probably not alcohol-licensed facilities. So can you tell me if all of these stakeholders were involved in this conversation?
Yes, as I noted on this section here, we've notified them three times. Anybody who was a licensed facility received the email with the draft of the code each time we amended the draft code, so they've been apprised of the situation. And there are some that do have beer and wine licenses, which are much easier to get than the actual liquor licenses. So there are several spas that, that are licensed for beer and wine. And there are some, uh, that maybe the nail salons or things like that, that ISP has been in discussions with to say, you aren't already legal, you need to become legal and go get your beer and wine licenses. So they are aware and they're monitoring it, and, um, we would encourage them to seek out a beer and wine license if they want to do mimosas.
Even if they're not selling it, they're just, it's the same thing. It's on premise, so, and you're confident that they've all been informed?
They have all been informed of this code. I do not know to the extent of ISP talking to them about their current activities.
Right, but that this code will affect, that they'll be in violation with the mimosa tomorrow?
Which they already likely were, or could be.
Okay.
Under ISP's purview.
Okay.
No other questions? Look for a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to dispense with the rule and read council bill number twenty-five dash one zero one three, once by title only.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, discussion. Oh, I love the quiet. Roll call, please.
Gookin?
Of course.
English?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Miller?
Hi.
Evans?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Read the title, please.
Council Bill number two-five dash one zero one three, An Ordinance of the City of Coeur d'Alene, Cootney County, Idaho, Amending Coeur d'Alene Municipal Code Chapter five point two eight, entitled, entitled Massage Facilities and Spas, Repealing All Ordinances and Parts of Ordinances in Conflict Here With, Providing a Severability Clause, Providing for the Publication of a Summary of This Ordinance and Effective Date Hereof.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt Council Bill number twenty-five dash one zero one three.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Gookin?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Miller?
Hi.
Evans?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
All right, thank you all. We, our next, uh, moment is we're having a public hearing, so hopefully if you're interested in speaking to this, uh, you've been on the sign-up list. There's nobody on this list. Well, that makes it a little easier for us. So, Renata, you're going to carry this one, too?
Yes, I'm going to bring us home tonight. Okay, so I am here before you for a fee increase public hearings required by Idaho Code. Anytime we increase a fee by more than five percent or five percent and more, we would have to have a public hearing, and it must be approved by a resolution of the city council. So we do have, um, we try to take a look at this annually. The last time we brought one forward was May of two thousand and twenty-four, so it was time to bring another one forward. Um, I check in with all the departments, and we have fee requests from Building, Finance, Fire, Library, Municipal Services, Parks and Recreation, Police, and Water Departments. These, uh, the notice of public hearing was published, and the fees have been on our website since June twenty-sixth for public consumption. So I'm just going to do the highlights. There are a lot of fees, a lot of them are very similarly increased because of staffing costs, but I'll run through a few highlights for you and the public at large. Um, and we have staff here from representing each department. If you have specific questions, we can certainly call them up at the conclusion of the presentation, and you can ask your specific questions to them. So the Building Department has increased several of their, um, fees that have to do with hourly wages to increase, uh, that reflects current wages, benefits, and overtime rates from anywhere from seventy to ninety dollars throughout their fee structure. There were several clarifications that needed to be made to mechanical fees and permits, demolition permits, and the associated stormwater and plumbing fees. So it just wasn't clear, so we clarified that. So sometimes even though it's not a five percent increase, we included in this resolution so that we have an accurate documentation of why and when things were changed throughout time. Um, they've increased the fees for manufacturer home settings, and I wanted to also clarify that it included the deck or landing up to twenty square feet. And we have what is called a change of occupancy that occurs, so business comes in and changes the type of use that was there previously. Takes a lot of ta, staff time and involves several departments, so we have amended that fee and created, uh, covered those additional costs. And we've created a new category for temporary certificates of occupancy, so when maybe a construction isn't quite finished and ready, maybe the landscaping isn't done, or some small non-life safety issue, they come in and request a temporary certificate, requires additional inspections, and so they've created a fee that, um, includes those costs as well. And they wanted to note that they did check in with Post Falls and Hayden, and their fees are very similar to ours, and so we are very comparable to neighboring jurisdictions. The Finance Department has requested increase in garbage rates to keep in line with costs, and then the five percent annual increase to street lighting fees over the next three years. We try and do them in a couple-year segments, so we don't have to do this every year, and people can anticipate those additional costs. According to Finance, we're trying to build up some capital costs for some additional, um, street, or, street lighting, uh, replacements that need to occur, so. Um, the Fire Department didn't have a general inspection fee, so we added one in that included the fully loaded wage rates. And then, um, Daycares, uh, are now being taken over by the state of Idaho. We aren't regulating them at a local level, however, they're still requesting our local fire personnel to do the inspection of those facilities. So Fire has put in, uh, an inspection fee for that. Seems at a little bit of a discounted rate, but they think, once they get into them once, the annual inspections go super fast. Um, so the Library, just increasing their janitorial fee for use of this room, a slight amount to cover actual costs. The Municipal Services has looked at several of the business license and permits and raised them five percent to cover additional staffing costs, not for additional staff, but our costs of, have raised for staffing. Um, we had a door-to-door solicitation license that hadn't been increased since two thousand and nineteen, so I estimated a five percent annual increase for that one, for each year. So that's, it looks like a bigger jump. Um, and special events, we've increased five percent, but I know there's a lot of dialogue that needs to go on regarding special events, and we have a meeting coming up in August to talk about how to maybe better, uh, deal with those special events. We have a fairly low fee to block off a one-block segment of town, but it's very time-intensive and staffing, and, you know, we don't want people to come in and pull a special event perme, permit just to park a bunch of cars for one block for one day. That wasn't the intention of that. So we really want to dig into that a little bit deeper and bring something back to council for you all to consider later. Parks and Recreation, as you know, the Parks Director had presented to you the special niche wall that they had artistically done, so they wanted to establish some fees associated with that that are a little bit higher than the regular niche wall. And, um, some other additional cemetery costs for, um, some of the weekend use includes overtime for staff, so they added in some additional cost to those. Um, and then they looked at some of their recreation fees, and again, additional costs for scorekeepers and programming, um, so that is what they looked at there for increasing those. And they looked at the Jewett House wedding fees and increased those appropriately as well. Um, the Police Department has requested an increase in their traffic security control fees, that's for off-staff time use, and that is associated with staffing costs. The Water Department presented to you, uh, once at a city council meeting and once at a budget workshop, the water fee increases, and that is included in this resolution. Um, and then all of the proposed, uh, capitalization fees are also included in this. Um, they are currently working with their contractor, um, to do the tiered rate study, and they'll be bringing that back to you at a later date. And then they just removed some, some wording that was there regarding mobile home park capitalizing, capitalization fees that are no longer needed. So at this point, all stand for questions, staff stands for question, and then we would request you accept any public comments, there's nobody signed up, and approve the resolution accordingly.
So do I need to open this public hearing and then close it? Is that?
First, if there's any, if there's any questions for staff, and then open the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. All right. Kiki.
Dan, I think had his hand up first.
I think Kiki's going to say the same thing that I was going to say.
We are both wearing blue.
Girls first, you guys, I'm old school.
Um, I, I just had a few things. There's some new, new, uh, fees in here. One was the fee on the change of occupancy, and the other, there's another one that's an issuance of a temporary certificate of occupancy. So I don't know if Building can talk about that. What? Why would that be, um, if a building is permitted for one use and then another use with no building permit or structural changes comes to, um, can you just speak to that question?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, yeah, the additional fee is, isn't so much an additional fee. Um, in, what we're currently doing is just charging the regular permit fee based on the lowest value that we have on, on the permit scale. And so it, it's roughly about a hundred and thirty dollars. And so there's more time that goes into a change of use, just reviewing the occupancy type, see if it fits, so there's multiple departments that are involved. And so we just established a minimum fee of a hundred and fifty dollars. we just established a minimum fee of a hundred and fifty dollars.
For, for any type of occupancy that it is?
Any type of occupancy.
Okay. And then what, why would, talk about the temporary certificate of occupancy. So it's the same thing that you're?
Yeah, it's, it's to capture some of the staff time, because once we issue a temporary certificate of occupancy, there's more time at our front counter that's being spent. There's re-inspections that have to be done. It just takes a lot more staff time. It is tiered because residentially, there's, there's fewer staff members involved with the, with the temporary, where commercially, we'll have more, more departments involved with that portion of it.
Okay, still a little confusing. Then one of my, and that's all I have for, for you, Ted, but then, Renata, one of my other questions was, there, there were some fees raised for traffic control and policing for events, and I know that you said we're going to be talking about events altogether. But by permit on some of these events, are those required services, or can they be provided by the event holder and not be part of the permit to use city services?
So the police one specifically was approved as a special program in two thousand and fifteen. So that is for off, off-duty police officers to do private events. So if that's, if they're doing security for, I don't even know how to explain it. I don't know. Some celebrity at a house on the lake, you know, that would be a separate situation than our special events.
Okay, so our special events rate would be?
Let Walther explain it more, because I'm stumbling over my own words on this one. So well, that'll make it look much better.
I guess I'm trying to piece together where this comes in. Just tell me where this special event, this particular fee.
That's for our off-duty police officer program. So a good example of that is like during Black Friday, oftentimes Best Buy will hire off-duty police officers to stand outside of their business to make sure there isn't theft or riots or whatever. There's a celebrity golf tournament coming up. They're hiring us to run security for that, that type of thing, which is separate from city special events. These are private events that they hire off-duty police officers with full police powers, and that includes our wages and the vehicles and the things that we take to function.
And that comes through the permit process, or no, it just is direct?
No permit, no city permit. This is contracted with the police department.
And this is where the rate is based?
Yes.
With a direct contract with the police department?
Yeah, our base wages have gone up since the last time this was looked at. So to cover those costs, we're asking for a fee increase.
Okay, that makes sense. I, I was trying to decide whether we were using traffic control and police and security and all of that for these events, but this is off-duty, separate, directly contracted for those services with a police department?
Correct. Private events versus public events.
And that's what that rate is? Okay, another one on cap fees, but that's going to come with water. And then the general inspect didn't, hmm, that's not police, it's fire. I'm looking at you. The general inspection fee for fire, there's never been a general inspection fee for fire. What, what does a general inspection fee cover?
So when it's not associated with a building permit or a business license. So they have some other things that are coming up that would be general, and like the, the daycare one just kind of brought it to light, that occasionally they have to go and do special inspections, and there's no way to recuperate any rate for that. And I don't know exactly a good example to give you. Is somebody from fire here? Yes, I want to really give you a good example.
Thank you, department people for being here. It's really helpful to ask someone, not that Renata is not very, very well informed, but.
Yeah, some of the, the examples for fire would be for, look at different hazmat that comes through town. It could be for different processes like tar pots or a variety of things. There's a section in the fire code that has a, several operating, several operational type of, of, of things that will occur. That's kind of hard to describe. It's kind of like the, it's kind of like a, it's a catch-all type of, we had tent permits.
Operational permits.
Operational permits. So for somebody doing a, like a, a tar pot, or has a, or hazmat, hazardous materials are involved. It's just a general inspection fee for us to go out and, and ensure public safety.
Okay, so I think it's a catch-all is the best thing.
Yeah, it's a, I wish I had a better example of it.
Okay.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Not one of the others. It's not a daycare, not a building section.
A regular building.
Follow-up one on that is that for our counseling office, we are required under Medicaid provisions to have an annual fire inspection of the building, and they come through and make sure that, you know, the corridor, they're big on, you know, the corridors are clear, and the, you know, fire extinguisher is there, and it's been serviced recently. So is that the kind?
No, these are, these are for other operational type of permits.
We didn't charge for that. Did we get charged, or?
We had not been charged. You don't get charged for that, no, sir.
But that, that would be reasonable. Okay. Okay.
Get your checkbook out.
Take a note, Jeff.
The category. Thank you.
All right.
I'm through. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Kristi. No, Kiki asked all my questions.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Bill Greenwood, you know I wouldn't leave you alone.
Oh, one more?
Bill, I just have some questions. We haven't had Parker Rec for a little bit, where I would have asked you there. The Jewett House, first of all, you've done a fantastic job making the Jewett House revenue positive. Thank you for that.
Well, I can't take credit for that. Adam Roush has done all that on his own. I, I let him run with it, and he's done an excellent job.
That's great. So I see that the deposit's twelve hundred, and then it's proposed, and then twelve hundred for four hours. I, I haven't been married in overly long, I mean, I'm married, but I haven't had the ceremony in, gosh, twenty-eight years. And so is that the market rate? Are we, are we capturing?
We're below the market rate.
We are?
We've got a, a small little niche that, that we're working through. So a full-on wedding venue would cost a lot more. So what happens is, we found a sweet spot, so they have to go and do a rental company for tent and catering to come in for the food. So we're just offering the location, which is the best around here. So that, that's why it's, it's a little bit lower than you might see at other venues.
Okay. And then I was just going to comment that you're the center of the niche is, I probably can't afford that, Bill. I understand it's for eternity, but I wanted to know, do you directly ascend to heaven? Or what? I mean, but I know it's beautiful, so.
So I was out there driving around this week, and remember, I told you Dale Young wanted a specific location. Well, he's already got his door engraved. It's got a little yang, yang symbol on it. Looks really cool.
That's great. Thank you, Bill.
Yep.
Have you got anything?
No.
I have to make a comment. I was looking forward to my thirty-five gallon trash can, and it went up forty-five cents. So I think that's a great deal. And I know we contract for trash, but thank you for being so reasonable for trash. All right.
Mr. Mayor, overall, I would say that this, these are very conservative, modest increases, and I'm, I appreciate what staff has done. I could make a motion, but I don't have it in front of me, so.
We need to open.
You'd open, close this, open, public comment. Anybody want to talk about these good deals? Hearing none, we close the public comment. All right, council, look for a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve Resolution number twenty-five zero three seven, amending city fees for services proposed by the building, finance, fire, library, municipal services, parks and recreation, police, and water departments.
Second.
Double-dipping here. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Discussion. And we just note, we had a very nice endorsement to do these fees by the Coeur d'Alene Press. So. Can't argue with that.
And there is no landlord fee.
All right, hearing that, all that. Roll call, please. Kelly?
English?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Miller?
Hi.
Evans?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yeah.
So we'll look for a motion to recess till Monday.
On Monday, okay. Geez, I need to read that one. So motion to recess to July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five at twelve noon here in the library community room located at seven oh two East Front Avenue for a council workshop to discuss fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
Second, I can't wait. Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Recessed.
Okay, all right.